First we move with plans and they're just all big coffee.
Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Would you please rise and join me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, staff is present with the exception of our finance director, Patsy, and council Judith is absent this evening. Do I have a motion to excuse her absence? Okay, a motion was made by Councilman Owen and seconded by Councilmember Kinzer to excuse Judith Dunley's absence. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Signified by no. Motion carries unanimously to excuse Judith Dunley. Next up is the consent calendar. We have a long one tonight. Items A through I and council, you know the drill.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt consent calendar, items A through I.
Motion was made by Councilmember Lemley and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to approve consent calendar items A through I. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signified by no. A motion to approve the consent calendar A through I is unanimous. Next up, we have a special presentation from, by Cindy Verge from the Tulip Festival. Please come on up to the podium.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me here tonight. I make my annual visit to all the city council meetings and the commissioners' meetings to thank you for your support at the Skagit Valley Tulip Festival. We really, really appreciate it. It's great to have all the different elected officials around our valley helping us and supporting us when we put on the festival each year. It truly is a community festival. We look forward to the Wood Fest that's held in Cedar Wully the first weekend each year, and there's usually, one of the basketball tournaments is often here as well, one of the, that Skagit County Parks puts on. And we keep working to try and get some more things going up here, and hopefully in the next few years, we can make that happen. Be nice if Northern State got going again, and I know it's not called Northern State anymore, but from way back when it has been. And if that could happen, I could see you could have an event much like Packard does, where they're closed facility, but once a year, they offer tours and welcome the public in, and that's during the Tulip Festival. And that brings about 3,000 or 4,000 people out there just to Packard and Farm to Market Road. So it could be really something fun to bring people up here because I think there'll be a lot going on that folks will want to know about. So without much ado, more ado, I should say, I have the poster for the city of Cedar Wully.
Lovely. Do you want to show the public so they can see what the design is?
And the artist is Trish Hardy, and Trish, as you can tell, is fascinated by Mount Baker. Many, many of her paintings and her drawings show the volcano in her backyard, as she puts it. And I think she just captured really the spirit of Skagit Valley because you can see the snow geese flying, trees out there, you can see the bicyclists. Although we did have one rule for her. The bicyclists had to be on a road or a path, not through the tulip field. Because her first try with that was actually having them ride through the fields, and we said, no, because somebody will want to do that. And then the other thing that I've done this evening is I've distributed the Tulip Festival brochure, and if you need more of them, let us know. We get 200,000 of those printed each year, and they're distributed starting at the King Pierce County line up through Vancouver, B.C., and on all the Western State ferries. And that's through certified brochure service, and they distribute 85,000 of them that way. And we've already sent out probably 3,000 brochures since the middle of January to individuals and groups that have wanted them. So we're well on our way to another successful festival.
Well, I would gladly accept that.
Wonderful.
For the city. Wow, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Want to pass it down? Well Cindy, I appreciate your chairman reaching out to Cedar Wully and trying to work with us to find new ways to involve us, because we're a bit off the beaten path for Tulip Festival. And I look forward to meeting with him and working with the Chamber of Commerce, because I know there's ways that we can bring our food establishments into this. I know that sometimes there's long waits over there. And, you know, we're only 15 minutes away from Mount Vernon, so rather than wait for an hour, I think it would be nice if they sent some of those people over here.
Yes, I agree. And we're always looking for people that might want to serve on our Board of Directors.
Okay. Words out there, folks.
If you all know of anybody that might be interested, just get in touch, because every year we have, it's, our directors serve three-year terms, and we look for new people each year. And we'd be very pleased to bring somebody from Cedar Wully on the board to help with that voice.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Based upon the idea too about the new plan, SWIP Center.
Yes, I have all sorts of ideas. Sometimes they don't always happen. But I think, I think that one could really come forth because the, just the various things that I've attended and read about what's going to be going on up there, I think people will be fascinated. And it also has just the real possibility of a lot of outdoor recreation, and we know folks that come to the Tulip Festival often are looking for those kind of opportunities too. So I think there's some real possibilities that'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Looks like we moved straight to new business. Is this sound coming out right? Sounds funny. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed public comment. Item five, public comment. So if anyone would like to make public comment this evening, remember that you're allowed three minutes at the microphone. We've asked that you state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to the council, and it's not a time for cross-examination.
Tim Holland, 26203 Minkler Road, and just a quick thank you to the board for putting on that program we just attended about parliamentary procedure. That was extremely helpful. The book was very useful, and I'm certainly going to be using that in my efforts. So I really appreciate that you put that on, and I think that was very, very worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else? Dennis.
You should all have my name by now. Dennis, 10109 Telkot Street, Cedar Wully. You know, I know library deals going on Friday night, I think it is. I'm just hoping that, you know, I understand that not only is it possible or legal that you can not give direct feedback from the voters except to council members, you can actually put it on the agenda, actually, or put a building in the city of Cedar Wully, a public building, and let another party take partial ownership of operation of it or whatever, or at least the operation of it, the annexation guesses later. But you can also put a bond through without a vote of the voters, and I hope you aren't going to be doing that. I think the people should have a right, direct input in if we do a bond, since they're the ones, their money's going to pay it back. And I know you can do something like, what I've heard is a councilmatic vote. It's sort of like an unanimous vote, where you don't really have to stand up, but your hand up is one of the people voting for it. But, you know, these things do come back to get you when you run for election or run for another office. You know, I know Chuck's just really excited about running for another office, but I would hope that's not going to happen. I know it can happen. I know you have the authority to do so. I guess it sort of comes down to, you know, you can have a lot of authority, but I think sometimes you're a better leader by not taking the easy route, something you can do, but maybe you shouldn't do, to get the people behind you. I did have, I was surprised that someone actually quoted me in the paper the other day. I think there's a lot of people that are upset because they haven't been brought into direct, you know, direct representation of what's been going on. And one thing I found this afternoon for, Aaron said that the meeting was going on, so I came over for that first part of it. I did find out a lot of it, you know, you guys have a lot of input, city council members, and the mayor has more than anybody. And, you know, it does affect us all, and I think everybody should have a direct vote in that, even though legally they don't, you don't have to give it to them. If you don't think it's necessary, I think that's how we got into this whole thing, is, you know, you didn't really have to go and ask the voters if they wanted to do consolidation or not, which personally I think makes a lot of sense. But I still don't think you should just, in many ways, push the voters away as a final decision maker. You go out and ask for their votes, and if that's the only time to get, you get feedback from them, it may not be the best feedback in the world when you run for election. But I know a lot of you don't plan on doing that. But we're all members of the community, and I would hope that you would stand up for all the people in the community. So I thank you for your time. I know you've been through a lot of this, and I guess Friday's probably not going to be much fun either, but thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. And just a point of clarification, if there is a vote of any type, councilmatic bond or otherwise, that's a public vote, and you will know how people voted.
Mayor, I'm not talking about a public vote. I mean, that's public vote, whatever you do up there, isn't it? I'm talking about a direct vote by the voters. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment period? Okay, I'll close the public comment period now, and we'll move on to new business. With the council's permission, we have a lot of new business items here. Items six through 13 are pretty much all related, so I think if we let, these are all Mark's, if we let him kind of explain those all at once, unless you have a preference, otherwise I think it's an efficient way to get through them. Any objections? Okay, Mark, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for loading us up.
Well, I'll try and make it brief with these. So these are the result of...
Mark, can I ask you to speak into the mic so the public can hear better, please?
These ordinances, in particular the ones in items...
It's not on.
Six through, it's still not working. Item six through 11 are the result of our recent update of the Cedar Wully Public Works Department standards. In doing that, I went and, went back and compared with the municipal code, the authority for the various parts in the standards, and I have cross-referenced them. And I also found these sections of the municipal code that were either outdated or needed updating to bring them into conformance with the standards that we have modified. So I'll kind of talk you through them one at a time and be fairly brief. Some of them are very simple. The one, the first one for Chapter 5, 48.020A, that particular section had specific fees outlined for various public works department things like permits and that kind of stuff. In recent years, we've adopted our fees specifically by a standalone resolution. It's the Building Planning and Engineering Fee Schedule. In fact, you'll be seeing another version of that coming up in the not-too-distant future. We're working on that now, kind of another outgrowth of this whole process. So what this particular ordinance does is deletes the reference to specific fees that are currently in the code and makes, just references then the resolution that you adopt for the fee schedule. The second one for chapter, or title seven, rights of way. We found in reviewing this that rights of way were not really specifically addressed in terms of permitting, bonding, insurance. And in particular, insurance came up as being a significant lack in our existing code. So Aaron has rewritten this to specifically reference development work, or any work really, that takes place in city right-of-way, requiring insurance to the city's current insurance requirements, and also bonds being required in certain instances. Those again are fleshed out in either the fee schedule or the standards themselves, so that's the intention of that one. Chapter 8.12 is the city dump. After all of these years of not operating it, and it has been decades, there was still a reference to the operation of the dump in the code, and so this simply repeals that chapter of the code. Chapter 9, 46, there was another thing we found as a lack in the code, specific reference to construction in city rights of way. The current code gives the city administrator the authority to approve work outside of the normal working hours that are specified in the noise ordinance of the code, but it did not specifically address construction work. And so, construction work, for instance, there is a project happening this summer that DOT will be doing work at night on Highway 20 within the city limits. Under our current code, that would not be permissible, and there wasn't a vehicle for approving that. So this corrects that and gives the city supervisor the authority to approve work outside of those hours, which are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on weekends, as he deems appropriate. Chapter 10, 20.020, it's another one that was noticed in our review of the code, but also was brought into even more importance with the recent frost damage to the roads. This particular chapter and subsection delineates the truck routes within the city, which are limited pretty much to our arterial streets, MedCaf, Highway 20, State Ferry Street, those type of roadways. And there is provisions in there for limiting weight on those and other city streets. There's also authority within this chapter for the director to put weight limits on local access roads in the case of frost, like we had, frost heat conditions like we've had this spring. This particular revision updates the truck routes to reflect the new streets, in particular Jamison, that passes now from the Beatty intersection directly to Highway 9. That's a new route. That's covered in this, is added in as a truck route. And it eliminates West Nelson and Beatty, that used to be the route. It also adds in Edward R. Morrow Street and does a few other minor changes in that regard. It also adds provision in for oversized and overweight vehicles. We do not currently include in our code any regulatory authority over those. So this adds in a provision that we can permit oversized and overweight loads. This is another thing that came to us recently. There was a house-moving proposal in town that we had no way to regulate that or permit that. And that's important, if nothing else, just to make sure that we know these things are happening in the city limits and the proper police and fire and other agencies can be notified of that work taking place. So that's the purpose for the 10, 20 ordinance. Chapter 12, 12, obstructions. We found in the review of the code that this, this particular section prohibited such things as street fairs and vendors using city rights of way. Of course, our practice for many years now has been to have these events downtown. So this corrects that and basically brings the code into compliance with our current way of handling those things and making our city a very attractive place to others. Chapter 15, 40 is the most extensive of the revisions, and this basically, again, is related to the updates to the Public Works Department standards. We have clarified the designations for arterial and local access streets to bring them into compliance with the current federal functional classification system, which you hear about from me whenever I bring you the tip on a yearly basis. Our old code descriptions were not up to date with that. Those have been changed. And there's some other minor changes, like correcting some titles that were covered in that particular section. So, and that is pretty much all of the ordinance that we had. Item number 12 is a proposed ordinance amending, or adopting a complete streets policy. In 2009, the city adopted its original complete streets policy. As I mentioned last time in talking about the Complete Streets Award we received through the Department of, or the Transportation Improvement Board, our grant wasn't quite as high as it could have been, and the reason that Tib told me for that was is we did not have a very strong complete streets policy. So I've proposed revisions to our existing policy that make it very specific and very traceable within our website, within our code, and I've also made these references to match this in the Public Works Department standards as well. It'll be very easy for them to see what we are already doing. There's nothing proposed in what you see here tonight in this proposed resolution. That is not already the practice of the Public Works Department in completing transportation projects in the city. So Mayor, that's pretty much long and short of that. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Counsel, have any questions on any of those proposed ordinances?
I just have one question. Would it, would it be possible to take items six through 13 and approve all those items at once that we have to do individually?
Yeah, I consulted with our attorney just prior to this on your recommendation, and the clean way to do this is we have to go through each one. So unfortunately, no. I know none of them are controversial, but we have to follow the clean procedures. So the first motion is on page 109 of your packet, and that number would be Resolution 1866.
I do have one question for Mark.
Go ahead.
With the update on the truck traffic through this town, most of the roads seem, you know, apt to handle that sort of traffic, but most of Jamison and most of Ferry Street are residential. And I was wondering, what can we do to limit or maybe have trucks ask permission before they use those, the residential sections of those streets? Is that something that could be updated into this resolution?
I'd have to get back to you on that. They are designated arterials. They have been with that designation forever, as long as I know of, anyway. I'd have to get back to you on that to see if there's a way to legally limit that. Probably some problems with that, the way they've been funded for construction over the years, quite frankly, but we can look into that report.
And the reason why I think is, I mean, most of the business access, whatever trucks would go to on those streets, all have main arterial, I guess, you know, like the highways as access points. But to have trucks drive, you know, up Minkler to Railroad to Jamison out to 9, you know, who knows if they'll do that or not. But I just think, you know, they get a permit to have oversight loads from you. I mean, what...
Yeah, it's a bit of a two-edged sword, because, you know, whenever there's construction and those kind of things happening, house construction where they need to get a load in there, that means they'd have to get a special permit if you had that limitation on them. So I'll just have to get back to you on that. I'm not certain of how we would do that, and we certainly could come back later and report back on that. Have you noticed problems with freight traffic on Jamison?
No, I don't, but I, I mean, I, you know, I guess this is something that no trucker's going to probably dig up and look at. Oh, look, I can drive on Jamison now, or Ferry. But, you know, I just, it dawns on me that, you know, allowing trucks, I've seen it happen in, you know, at friends' houses in Mount Vernon, there's, you know, kind of a residential street that has a large business that, you know, has trucks going by, and it's just not a pleasant, pleasant place to visit. So I just don't want that for any of the residents in Cedar Wully.
Okay, Cheryl corrected me. Thank you, Cheryl. That is a, first one is resolution, so that would be 95217.
Are you looking at page 109?
I am.
That's an ordinance.
Oh, it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance that adopts a fee schedule that's established by resolution.
Ah, okay, well, I'm wrong twice then.
All these are ordinances.
Okay.
All those six through 12 are ordinances, and 13 is a resolution.
Changing resolutions.
Starting at 1866 on page 109. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1866, Tac 17, amending Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 5, Tac 48, Tac 020, to delete specific fees and instead reference fees as established by resolution of the city, by the city council.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Lemley, seconded by Councilmember Johnson to approve the ordinance 1866, Tac 17, amending Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 5.48.020.Alpha to delete specified fees and instead reference fees as established by the resolution of the city council. Any further discussion? All in favor? Signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. And it passes unanimously, ordinance 186617. Next is item seven on page 112.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 186717, deleting the SWMC Chapter 8.12 city dump in its entirety.
Motion was made by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Owen to adopt ordinance 1867, Tac 17, deleting Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 8.12, city dump in its entirety. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries to adopt ordinance 186717. Item eight on page 115. That would be ordinance 168.
1868.
1868.
1868.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance 1868, Tac 17, amending Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Tac 46, Tac 020, to limit the hours of construction work.
Next. A motion was made by Councilmember Lemley and seconded by Councilmember Owen to adopt ordinance 1868, Tac 17, amending the Cedar Wully Municipal Code 9.46.020 to limit the hours of construction work. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next is page 118.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 186917, amending the Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 10, 20.020, weight limits to update designated truck and haul routes. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Carnegie to adopt ordinance 1869.117, amending Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 10.20.020, weight limits to update the designated truck and haul routes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordinance 186917 passes unanimously. Next is item 10, page 123. Sorry, I'm trying to go as quickly as I can, folks. Keep up here.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Kinzer and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to adopt ordinance 1870.17, repealing the Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 12.12, obstructions in its entirety. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance 187017 passes unanimously. Next up is page... Next up is page... Item 11, page 126.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 1871-17, amending Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 15.40, Public Works Construction Standards.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Kenzer, seconded by Councilmember Johnson, to adopt Ordinance 1871.17, amending the Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 15.40, Public Works Construction Standards. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance 1871-17 passes unanimously. Next up, item 12, page 131.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Ordinance 1872-17, amending Cedar Wully Municipal Code's Title VII, Sidew... I mean, sorry, City Rights of Way.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Carnegie, seconded by Councilmember Lemley, to adopt Ordinance 1872, Tac 17, amending the Cedar Wully Municipal Code, Title VII, City Rights of Way.
Can I just ask Mark a question on this? You were talking about community functions. This seems like it has to do with utilities. Is that what you're talking about on this one?
There's two of them that affect Chapter Seven. One of the earlier ones you passed was the one dealing with the obstructions.
Okay.
That's the one that dealt with affairs and stuff like that.
I guess miscued when you were talking, so, thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Item 13, page 134 of your packet.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 1873-17, Complete Streets Policy.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Carnegie, seconded by Councilmember Johnson, to adopt 1873, Tac 17, the Complete Streets Policy. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the resolution passes unanimously. Item 14, Animal Ordinance Update. This is a first reading and one that might require some thought. Who's this? Aaron?
He'll take this. Officer Carr has identified some time ago a discrepancy between Title VI and Title 17 regarding the number of dogs one can keep within the city limits without getting a kennel license. In one section, it appears to be four, and the other one, it appears to be fewer than four. But it's phrased, I think, more than three. It's awkwardly phrased. So this ordinance is intended to just very clearly identify that what a kennel is, and specifically that a kennel is an establishment other than a veterinary hospital wherein any person, of course, person is defined in the broadest sense, engages in the business of boarding, breeding, buying, letting for hire, training for a fee, or selling dogs, or, and this is the key, or premises where four or more dogs over four months of age are harbored. So you can see the changes. It currently is more than four to say four or more. That's the... That's the Title VI issue. And then if you go down to Section 2 of the ordinance under 17, there's a cross-reference between the zoning code and the animal code to cross-reference the kennel. And then we've got a new section that identifies that no person shall own or keep within the city limits more than three dogs of licensing age, does not include suckling young. Any person wanting to keep more than three dogs of licensing age shall do so only in a properly licensed kennel or at a veterinary clinic. And then there's an exemption for emergency circumstances to temporarily shelter an additional two dogs for a period of not to exceed six months. Just have to let the animal control officer know. So I guess the question for the council is really one of the policy. Do you want a three-dog limit, or do you want a four-dog limit? Or do you want a six-dog limit? You know, the goal of having a clear statutory limit is that it allows neighbors who have dogs around them with owners who are not being responsible or respectful with their dogs to complain, and it gives the animal code enforcement officer the ability to go out and say, "Hey, you've got too many. You need to dial it back." This is like many of these code enforcement sections. These are complaint-driven code sections. So you may have four dogs today, but nobody knows it because they're indoor dogs, they're not left out barking all night long, and there's no reason why animal control's gonna come over and ask you to get rid of a dog. On the other hand, you may have the four dogs, and they're the ones roaming your yard at all hours. This would give the tool for animal control to deal with that with a neighbor. So that's the question for the council. It's a first reading. This one is maybe a little bit more than the other ordinances in that it's really asking you the question of which number. But we currently do have a dog limit in the code, so it's not a new concept.
Are there a number of problems in the city that... Or is this just like a one-house thing, or is there multiple circumstances of this?
This is actually not written with any particular problem in mind. It's been an issue that's come up as an ongoing issue, and the question most recently was with regard to a house that was for sale. The prospective buyer had, I don't remember, six dogs, and they liked to foster dogs, and they wanted to know what the rules were. So I gave one answer, and somebody else had a different answer, and Laura said, "Well, here's a range of answers." And that's just not good, clear policy for us. So we really opt to be clear about what we want, and I see as I'm looking at this, this has the same discrepancy in it. So, you know, Section 1 is four, and Section 2 is three, so it's up to you where you want to go with that. But that is really, you know, one interpretation of current code would be three, the other's four.
Well, four if you have a kennel license, three if you don't, right? Is that what this is saying, the change here?
Right. Yeah, yeah, that's right. That is how it was written. So kennel with a license would be four or more dogs, three or fewer dogs, no license required, or a veterinary hospital. That would be part of your permitting process.
I'm confused right now.
Okay. So if... So really, if someone does have four dogs and they don't have a kennel license right now, it's really not too much of a problem as long as the dogs are... What I'm saying is, they're not gonna have to just get rid of a dog or get a license unless their dogs are causing a problem, and their neighbors say they're...
It would be a complaint-driven process, but I think to be very clear in the answer, right now, we would not tell somebody with four dogs that they could only have three. After this ordinance, we would very clearly be able to tell somebody that you can't have four dogs. You can only have three without a kennel license.
Thank you.
We have some leniency on houses over a certain size, lots. Like, if you have an acre, you can have hived animals and things like that. Would that just be a question here, or are we saying all properties in the city?
No, that's a separate section of the curb that deals with farm animals. So there's really three sections. You get your household pets, so that's your dogs and cats, and your indoor caged animals, you know, your fish and birds, et cetera. You've got your farm animals, you know, goats and cows and horses, et cetera. Those are allowed on lots of 40,000 square feet and above, along with bees and, you know, so on. Then you've got your backyard pets, which would be your rabbits, your guinea pigs, your chickens, and they're limited by the number you can have based upon the size of your lot. So, no, the bigger lot does not buy you more dogs, but it does allow you to get, you know, horses and cows and pigs and...
And chickens.
You know, creatures of that nature. And I don't see that we regulate peacocks. I had that question come up recently.
They're running wild out there on Fruitdale and Minkler Road.
Well, we could lasso a few and bring them to town on the larger lots.
Lovely.
Four of them out there.
So does Counsel have anything else on this first reading?
No, I have... Three-dog nut sounds good to me.
I'm with Chuck.
The three-dog nut.
Okay.
Which verse?
Item 15, Parking and Overtime Limits for Recreational Vehicles. I believe this is Laura Carr, one, two. You gonna handle it, Aaron?
Yeah, so you'll recall, boy, it seems like it was maybe a year ago or so, we were dealing with the cars parked on rights of way that had been there long enough that plants were rooting into the asphalt under the vehicles. So we thought, boy, this isn't working. We've gotta find a way to get them out of there. And we tried a couple different techniques. You know, on one street, we said, "You can't be there on this day of the week from this time to that time," under the theory that we'd run a sweeper down the street. We'd had mixed success with that, honestly. It requires weekly enforcement to keep that up. Then we tried a 10-day limit citywide. You park your car on the right of way for 10 days, then you could be ticketed. But in order to actually impound the vehicle, it required three consecutive tickets that hadn't been appealed. And so by the time you work here 10 days, plus three tickets, which is one every 24 hours, plus the appeal period, we were several weeks in of essentially daily monitoring the vehicle to see that, in fact, hadn't moved. So that became not particularly useful in terms of an enforcement tool for abandoned vehicles on the streets that are not otherwise inoperable or unlicensed. This proposal is to address two issues. One is the original issue we've been trying to address now a couple different times. This would simply say 72 hours. If you're parked on the right of way for more than 72 hours, your vehicle could be subject to impound. This is what Burlington has, for example, in its code. I think that's where I took the language. It was read out of the Burlington Code. So this would be enforced, again, like any other police department enforcement matter with discretion, but it is intended to provide that tool. So if you've got the clearly abandoned vehicle that's being kind of rolled forward five feet and pushed back five feet because they don't want to get rid of it and they can't put it in their yard, this would give the tool to get rid of it. The second section deals with RVs. Right now, we have... We have language that essentially says that a guest can come to Cedar Wully and stay in an RV for up to 30 days in a year. And it doesn't limit where. So what this code section says is that there's clearly a limit on where. So you can still do it for 30 days. If you've got, you know, kids and grandkids coming and they're bringing the fifth wheel, that's fine. They can't do it on the street in front of your house. They can do it in your driveway. They can do it for 30 days. They could do it in an RV park. But if they're not in an RV park and they're on private property, they do have to have the written permission of the owner to verify that they have authority to be there for that guest period of time, that 30 days. So not 72 hours, no hours. You can't live in your RV parked in a city parking lot, in the Rite Aid parking lot, unless the owner gives you written permission or on the city rights of way. You just can't live in your RVs, is what this would say, except in an RV park or on private property with the permission. And so those are the two problems with this, both intended to continue the cleanup effort to address some of the nuisance violations in the city that, you know, we get calls about. And really, I would still say the majority of our calls that come in from citizens are about things like this. You know, the barking dog, the cars parked on the sidewalk, the RV that just seems to show up and has an awful lot of suspicious activity when normal people sleep, or potholes. So we're just trying to chip away at those issues with additional tools for law enforcement.
Under what classification would Laura determine an abandoned car or someone's vehicle if their main parking is on the street and they're gone for two weeks on vacation and that car doesn't move for two weeks? Are they supposed to call and say, "My car's gonna be on the street for this length of time before it gets impounded," or where does that regular moving car, for the most part, come into play compared to an abandoned one if someone's not there to move it?
Yeah, well, I think there are a couple things. You know, if the car is parked, say, facing the wrong direction with one wheel jacked up on the curb...
It's gonna be obvious circumstances.
That's a car that's gonna catch the eyes and maybe get attention. If it's just parked like a normal vehicle, otherwise looks like it's operable and used regularly, it's just gonna be driven by like every other car. So it'd be a neighbor calling to say, "Hey, boy, there's this funny car parked right in front of where I put my garbage can out. It hasn't moved in two weeks."
You're safe for the most part if you're...
Well, and then the second thing that Laura... Officer Carr or any of the officers would do is they run the vehicle. And if they find the vehicles associated with that house right there, they're gonna go knock on the door and say, "Hey, what's going on?" Discover nobody's home, you know, they're gonna use discretion in a situation like that unless there's some overriding and compelling reason to really jam somebody up by impounding a vehicle and sending it to the lockup. And, you know, I just don't think that's a scenario that's too likely to happen, although it is certainly possible, and we'll have to trust that we'll have some prudent use of discretion.
Anything else, Counsel?
I just have a comment regarding the RVs. I appreciate this particularly living on a street that's not very wide, and when you have an RV parked in the street, it makes it difficult sometimes to see around it or even for two cars to get past it. So the streets were not made, they're not designed right now to have RVs sit out in them, so...
And you see the challenge, when they're visiting for the full 30 days, you know, the electrical cord starts coming across the sidewalk, and sometimes somebody's lucky enough to have a convenient cleanout, so now there's a hose running out, wastewater hose going to the cleanout, and there's a freshwater hose going the other way.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, you get all sorts of issues obstructing the sidewalk, too.
Like the alien ship being plugged into the mother ship.
And there's aliens in those ships. Does Laura question, like on our street, Talcott Street, more so in your neighborhood, no parking this side of the street? I go up and down that street pretty regularly, and I see vehicles parked on that north side where it says "No Parking," and they're there for hours at a time, visiting somewhere mainly in Keith and Julie's neighborhood.
Well, I know, I had to move out of that because I couldn't get around all those vehicles, so it just wasn't working. Now, so the answer is that, again, a complaint-driven. So you just imagine if you're the code enforcement officer and you're driving through town, it is a remarkable sensory overload experience. You really can't just cruise around looking because everywhere you look, there's something that could be addressed. So that is an issue where the neighbors in that block would really need to call in and say, "There's, for some reason, people are parking in the wrong place." And I suspect it would take one set of warnings, and it wouldn't happen much again because it's just people getting, you know, a little complacent about where the vehicle should be parked.
I'm talking about just these medium-length term, two, three hours of cars parked right under the sign.
Right.
There's no parking any time, and there, the sign's here, and their car's parked right here, just obviously out of reading sight. "Oh, I didn't see it." So whether she calls those and tries to approach.
Well, Rick, you know those weird octagonal red signs with the white letters on them all over town? They've been there for years. A lot of people are surprised by them all the time. So this is not a little bitty parking sign versus a stop sign, you know?
We're still struggling with some of the cars on sidewalks that have been tuned up in the past, that just don't understand that when you block the entire sidewalk, it really presents a hazard for pedestrian traffic, and it's not that hard just to leave a few feet in front of the nose of your vehicle.
A vicious world.
Okay. So that's our first read, and if you have any issues that you want to bring forward, let us know. let us know.
And if not, we'll probably just put these on your consent calendar for next time. They seem pretty, pretty straightforward, so if there's no objection to that, I'd like to proceed that way.
Looks like we have consensus. Okay, committee reports. Go ahead, chief. Been exciting. See what happens when I leave town.
Right. Yeah, we don't want you going out of town anymore because I don't know who to report to. So one of the first things on the list, just for those who don't know, we're going to be losing our front office receptionist here pretty soon. She's due in a couple of weeks to have for baby number two, but she's worried that kid's ready to arrive any time now. So we got David Welch going to come and cover her front window while Joanna is out on maternity leave here. Hopefully she can hold off for a couple more weeks, but we're not really counting on that. Also, last Friday, the 17th, everybody probably heard about the shooting that happened in 300 block of West State Street. Really, there's not a lot of information as to why this happened. We got some cooperation from the victim. The victim's still in Harborview with a bullet in his chest. We recovered two bullets. Dean actually helped recover one of them from the vehicle we took into evidence and a second one. Sergeant Harris and one of my patrol officers did a little CSI work and dug the bullet out of the ground with a metal detector and all sorts of cool lights that Dean provided, which was really awesome. And the other bullet had hit a random vehicle that was parked at the residence and embedded in the door. So we recovered some bullets from the scene, we took a couple of vehicles into evidence, served search warrants on those, talked to the victim who says he doesn't know why anybody would shoot him, probably doesn't have anything to do with him having some level of gang ties, but there really, there wasn't really a good indicator as to what was going on. According to witnesses, somebody pulled up in front of the residence, jumped out of the car, ran around behind the business, or behind the house and started shooting. And shot the subject once and then took off. And the victim ran back in the house and 911 was called and he was transported and then eventually taken down to Harborview. That Friday night was a little bit of a weird night. At about the same time that we were serving search warrants on that shooting, we had a subject that matched, somewhat matched the description of our shooter firing a gun in Maven Park in Burlington, just wandering around shooting. And it was, I mean, it was probably an hour and a half after our shooting. We thought maybe that was our shooter. Nope, just another yahoo out drunk, staggering around, shooting in Burlington. But then right at the end of processing that shooting, we did have another shooting reported in town, and that was a self-inflicted gunshot wound right off a trail, trail road. So Como, Cairo, King, Q-13, Skagit Valley Herald had a field day in Cedar Woolley on Friday night while the mayor was out of town.
Thanks for handling that.
Yep. The person who did the self-inflicted gunshot wound survived and we released vehicles to his family. We did bring a young lady in for questioning. She was there when the shooting occurred and she was acting appropriately horrified that her boyfriend had tried to kill himself right in front of her. So it was a pretty rough night for a Friday night in Cedar Woolley. The last thing I have is, at the end of this month, Sergeant Pierce is stepping down as sergeant. He's been a sergeant for the last couple of years and he was my sergeant that was deployed with the Coast Guard. He's decided in his last few years here, he'd like to be a patrolman and go out and do police stuff, which is a whole lot more fun than doing sergeant stuff. Dave's been here, he was a month or month and a half in the academy behind me, so he's been here almost 25 years. Has had, you know, a great career. He's a Marine, came here right from the Marine Corps and has done pretty much all the jobs in the police department over the course of his career. He's kind of looking at winding down and enjoying some time with grandkids when they come up from Texas. And we're looking forward to promoting a new, one of our new youngsters into sergeant's position, so we're starting that process. I have a civil service meeting on Friday to meet with the Civil Service Commission to set up the parameters and we'll be doing that assessment center for hiring a new sergeant there in the next couple of months. So hopefully we'll be able to come to you with swearing in of a new sergeant here in the next few months and kind of a new chapter for some of our mid-management leadership. And we're really looking forward to that. And we get a really good performer on the ground at patrol, so it's good, it's good for us all around. So, and hopefully in the next, probably the second council meeting next month, hopefully we'll have some commendations coming up. We had some things go on in the last year and a half, and we got some commendation awards for response to the shooting at the mall and a couple of other things that are going to be coming up. We'll be bringing that to you, and Sergeant Pierce will be one of those people that we're giving a commendation to. So we've got a couple of things coming up, but it's kind of exciting. And that's all I have.
Chief Tucker?
Yeah.
If I might, that morning of the shooting, I noticed from probably the night before, there was a gang tag on the back of the nail salon that's on Ferry Street, Caf at that corner there. And I know sometimes occasionally, that's like a jumping in ceremony, whatever, and then they go do something stupid, so I don't know if that could be related or...
Now, this was, this was something a little more serious. We initially thought this was some gang-related issues, then we're not sure, it's just the young man that was shot has some gang ties, the people at the house don't, we know the people at the house, but the young man who was shot does have some gang ties. And then we thought there was a property dispute over a vehicle. That didn't make sense after we did more investigation. And we haven't seen a lot of new tagging in town that would, would indicate a ramping up. Now, there's stuff going on in Burlington where, right there behind the 7-Eleven, you'll see some new tagging that looks like there's something going on there. And those are people we know as well, they're, some of them are Cedar Woolley characters. So it's hard to tell, most likely not related, but we never can tell until we get a good look at it. We probably won't know the full story until we end up finding somebody who will give us a little bit of information to get out of a ticket for parking on Talcott Street or something.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief. Chief Klinger?
This Saturday from six till about 10, if you call 911 to get the fire department, you'll get Fire District Eight. They're going to be covering us while we have our annual spouse and significant other appreciation dinner and awards dinner. So the city will be covered. We have District Eight sends about 10 to 12 people down to handle calls in town. And today, I don't know if you saw us running around, we spent half the day out by Highway 99 and Butler Creek Road on the residential structure fire out there, so crews were busy today.
Thank you, chief. John?
Planning Commission had a meeting last night and I'd like to thank them for coming back again, so a short turnaround again this afternoon. And it seems like a good opportunity to remind council and the Planning Commission that we're also having a joint council/Planning Commission work session next Wednesday, March 1st, to talk about the 2007 comprehensive plan docket, to see what might be on this year's docket. Hopefully it'll be a little lighter than the past few years, since there's not urban growth, area expansions, and full comprehensive plan amendments required to be done this year. So it should be fairly light meeting. While we're talking about the Planning Commission, they, all the Planning Commission members now have iPads like council and they're, the Planning Commissioners now all have their own unique city email accounts, too. So those are, that would be the best way to communicate with the Planning Commission as we go forward here, so we can, it's largely done so we can keep track of emails for public records. And I think that's about all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Mark?
The Cascade Eternal Project advertises for bids tomorrow, and we'll close out the third week in March and have that to you, hopefully for award there at the last meeting in March. Other than that, you've heard what I've been up to the last few weeks.
Good boy, we have. Okay, thanks, Mark. Aaron?
I have nothing more to add.
Go down the line. Jermaine?
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser, winter fundraiser this coming Saturday. I think I said it was 25, it's actually 25, $20. And it's at the community center at 5 o'clock on Saturday. That's their biggest fundraiser. And then, of course, the library open house on the 24th, which that's at 5:30, 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
That's it.
Okay, Brenda?
I'd like to remind everybody about the Third Annual Sex Trafficking Conference that's going to be happening at the Swinamish Conference Center. I know it's, it's a difficult subject, but it's really something that's very present here within the Skagit Valley, as it is really around the world. And I'd encourage you, if you have an opportunity, to go out and just see, learn more about it and see what it is that you can do to help prevent it.
Chuck? I just wanted to thank Mark for all the hard work he done on the ordinances and it was actually a pleasant agenda. I really enjoyed reading, I read it twice all the way through, so he made it very interesting. So thanks for your hard work, Mark.
Yep.
Laura, too.
Rick? Rick?
Yeah, 109 Jamison Street, and next door, their neighbor, the county property. The county has done a good job maintaining their, that plot of land, but like 109 Jamison has been a couple of years and it's starting to get overgrown, and I wanted to know if we could send them a letter or start code enforcement on that, because it's looking pretty rough and you see people back there again, like we used to have, so.
Anything else?
No.
So Jermaine already talked about Boys and Girls Club. I think shaved the mayor's heads on the auction block, but that's, I don't see how anybody's getting much for their money in that case, but it's out there. The new City Scene magazine is out. If you haven't got it, we have copies at City Hall. This one was pretty much mostly on the Skagit STEM network, and we got some really positive comments from Washington State STEM. You know, this is the first city in the state that they mentioned that has done a whole magazine on it. They've seen some little articles and stuff. So I'm really proud of that magazine, the way it's turned out and our support of STEM. We will be going into executive for about 10 minutes. This has to do with collective bargaining, and we do expect action. You can stick around for it or not. And if we don't see you, have a pleasant evening and thank you all for coming. So we're going to go into executive at 8:03 for about 10 minutes. Okay, we're back from executive session at 8:20. And council, or anyone care to make the motion with respect to the memorandum of agreement with Ask Me? Motion was made by Councilmember Kinzer and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the city of Cedar Woolley and Ask Me Local 176. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item? Okay, motion was made by Councilman Carnegie, seconded by Councilmember Kinzer, I'll get it right, to authorize shared sick leave for Joanna, last name?
Yurby.
Yurby. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously without objection. I will, we will adjourn.